I'm going to be your, in case you didn't notice, I'm going to be the meeting chair tonight. Edie is traveling. She may be online. We'll find out. Let me do roll. But she's traveling back to Vermont and so she nominated me. The other thing that might be a little bit different is I'm doing this with an eye patch. So I've got double vision. So if I take that eye patch off, I see thirty board members, which will get confusing. So the people on my right just wave vigorously to get my attention and we'll get through it.
Want some chairs?
No, I'm okay. Um, I got the owl here. So as tradition would say, we'll go through the agenda. Sure, we're aligned on what we're going to cover tonight and then we'll get into it. Uh, we'll start with calling the order and reviewing the agenda now. We'll do a roll call. That will take care of that. Katie's going to cover the land acknowledgement. She has some words to share on that one. And then immediately after that, we'll go into community comments. If there's anybody here who has community comments to either share or represent from other community members, that's why I'm going to do that. And then move into the principals report from Smiley, which is where we are today in Bolton. Our next item on the agenda will be to discuss board compliance of the governance management and governance process policies. So we'll have some fair amount of time on the agenda set up to have that discussion without an hour. Uh, next up is another important item is to discuss approval of changes to the warning uh, for our annual meeting based on pending legislation. So hopefully everyone has had a chance to look at that. Link there and if, if the question, if you haven't, John's going to introduce those changes and how we're going to address them. Or how we propose to address them if the board is willing. If we stay on track, eight fifteen, we will look at approving two new policies, the one on responsible use of the computers network and internet. And also students who are unhoused. That should hopefully not take a lot of time because we've all allocated five minutes. And then move into community reports. So we'll have updates from the engagement, finance, negotiations, RAB and the SBA. Uh, we will then take a minute to through and make any changes to the meeting minutes from our last meeting. And then we have some other business items as noted on the agenda and I believe we do have a topic met with Joan about that we will go into executive session on towards the end of the meeting. Sound good? Am I right? Sound good on my left? Sound good? Any objections or additions they want to make? Hearing none, we'll start the meeting. Welcome, everybody. I will turn it over to Pat to run the roll call.
All right, thanks. Tara Arneson.
President.
Kevin Campbell.
Here.
Heather Chadwick. Tom Chaney.
Here.
Allison Conan. Gail Conley. I know he was just with us. I'm sure he'll be back. Edie Grinning. Absent. Eric Gildermeister.
Present.
Diane Kirson-Glipman.
Present.
Chuck Lacy.
Here.
Ethan Marer.
Here.
Stuart Morijo. Is that an absent? Okay. Katie Nelson. Lisa Pollak.
Present.
Andrew Pond.
Here.
Okay, thanks.
All right, Pat, get out there, join in. He's got his hand up.
Yeah, I'm, I'm here now. I can hear you. I couldn't hear you an hour, half hour ago. Ten minutes ago.
Good to, good to hear you.
Okay, also.
All right, also a roll call. Uh, next item here, Katie's going to go over a brief discussion, I think, on the land acknowledgement and possibly reading.
Um, I was just, I'm going to go over it. Yeah. So, um, as many of you know, there are a few of us who have really been thinking more deeply about the land acknowledgement. And a few of us have gone to listen to different groups or different meetings or have read different things um, that uh, refer to the importance or the need for land acknowledgements. And so, um, although we in no way want to change the sentiment for which Serena, I think, worked really hard to create the sound acknowledgement and in no way do we want to only listen to a single voice from any given community or nation regarding the land acknowledgement. I and Edie and myself attended a meeting with Judy Dow um, by the Richmond racial equity group and it was super enlightening. We learned a lot of things. And she had a lot to say about what a land acknowledgement should be. It gave us a lot of pause and she directed the statements that we have been saying under the category of land statements, not a land acknowledgement. And so although she had a lot of recommendations and she's worked with several school boards and we're hoping that she could come and share some of her thoughts with us. Um, what we learned is that a land acknowledgement is something that is a reflection between the individual and the land that they occupy. So it's meant to sort of encompass a perspective of a journey, the past in which we were definitely acknowledging and the present and the relationship between that individual and the land that they live on. And so some of the things that became evident is that if that statement were to be true and a living statement, we would be reflecting daily on our relationship with the land that we occupy. And so just briefly, when you think about the district, each school would ideally have a, a land acknowledgement concept and history for where the people reside and ideally it would change each season. And so it's a lot for us to really be conscious of. And um, we realized that this is something that like the Abar committee could really learn from and learn um, and engage with the different schools about how to create a more authentic um, perspective for something that is being called a land acknowledgement. And also for ourselves. So for instance, if we were to continue with reading a land acknowledgement, um, if I were to read it, I would read about my, I would talk about my relationship with the land where we live. If we're in Bolton, Andrew would talk about his relationship with the land where we are. Um, so we thought in like, um, thinking about our work with diversity, equity and inclusiveness and talking about the Avar council, that we should probably give pause to what we are saying when we say this and reflect as a group on how to move forward with the current um, ceremony, its nature of the land acknowledgement so that it becomes something that is meaningful to an individual and also authentic. And that is what I wanted to share with everybody. How does that sound?
Just, you know, I have done enough research and I paused it because I was supposed to connect with a UVM professor, but uh, just in terms of right now where we're at, this one, this was a culturally significant location.
Right.
I've done some studies done. Uh, it's the headwaters, right? It's where um, people would often come probably to trade. Um, there's probably a lot more activity going on here than we even realize. So as far as that like specific nature, I think it's important that we, you know, do some digging around
Right.
where our schools are located and understand some of that um, significance, like that historical difference.
Sure. And I don't know that it's necessarily committee work, but it's probably work from each of our towns where we represent to learn that history and connect with our, maybe the racial equity groups in those towns and figure what those landmarks are because that was really the premise of what she was saying.
Yeah, sure. And Katie, I worked as a school board, obviously, of the state acknowledgement and passing of it. And I would just like to, you know, open it up with respect later, but I'm happy to work with you and potentially Pat Brown, who I've worked very closely with, was a UVM professor, specialized kind of in land acknowledgements to think about how we could, you know, incorporate it differently. Uh, because I do think that Serena's wording and her intention was all, you know, really well done and really thought through. And so bringing that, you know, into something that would look a little different would be great.
Yeah, and we should have a land statement that could be very similar to this. And that's usually something that would be on written correspondence, email or web pages is what we learned. But again, like this is one perspective and I think it's really important also. It's just a deep, it's a deeper dive. And I think that's part of what her intention was with this, to motivate us to learn more.
So Katie, when, um, when would, when would something come back to the board?
I don't know that part.
So you'll work with Edie on that?
Yeah, totally. And anybody else who's interested, I know Chuck was really interested in Ethan and others. I in no way feel ownership over this. I was just available to go to that meeting on Thursday. Um, I, I do want to participate in that, but I don't have those details.
Any other responses to what we shared and ready to move on to the next item? Okay, we'll move.
Uh, let's start this. Uh, because we did do, uh, like we had a board vote of whether or not we were going to read the acknowledgement. Do we need to do anything further to not read?
I mean, I, I think we didn't really warn anything to make a major change. So I think.
I can read it if that makes everybody feel more comfortable too as part of process.
You know, I, I think we've, we've got the intent just having this discussion on it. And I think every meeting, the intent is to have some discussion on this and some acknowledgement. And if we just continue to update the board each meeting, I think, I think we'll be okay. The intent to nods. Okay. So thank you. We'll move on. Uh, the next item, we'll open it up to community comments. And I'll just read what we have to share here so we can stay within the guardrails of community comments. Uh, we try to limit um, the comments to no more than five minutes per person. Uh, the board requests that participants please state your name, place of residence and the topic of the comment so we can make sure we get the minutes um, correct. And because again, we don't warn these comments that uh, would be coming in, we cannot take any action on the items during the community comment period. Um, and we can really just have dialogue for clarification purposes. We will, as always, we do it. If there's something that comes up, we can call up at another meeting or offline to, to address the issue. Okay, so it looks like um, we have one person with their hand up. Uh, Katie, uh, you're, you know, the floor is yours.
Good evening. My name is Kate LaRose and I serve as the pandemic equity coordinator with the Vermont Center for Independent Living out of our main office in Montpelier. At VCIL, we are people with disabilities working together for dignity, independence and civil rights. We support people with disabilities around the state, including students. I am here tonight to amplify civil rights messaging as it relates to ensuring that students with disabilities have equitable access to safe, in-person learning during an ongoing pandemic. At the last school board meeting, it was shared that the reasonable accommodations currently being provided to students with high medical risk include virtual learning or staying home. This concerns us at VCIL as our understanding is that both of these options are discriminatory as they do not provide for free, appropriate public education in a least restrictive environment of non-disabled peers. In a March 2022 letter to educators and families, Federal Department of Education Secretary Miguel Cardona underscored, and I quote, "That state and local educational agencies are bound by federal laws, including Title II of the American with Disabilities Act, Section 504 of the Rehab Act and the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act to ensure the inclusion of students with disabilities, including those experiencing long COVID in our nation's schools." The letter goes on to state that the Office for Civil Rights will work to enforce these protections, which may include reasonable accommodations and modifications via layered prevention strategies, including universal or cohort masking, testing, vaccination and upgraded ventilation to improve indoor air quality. The letter states that LEAs must center the needs of vulnerable students and act to protect the rights of students with disabilities by ensuring their continued access to safe in-person learning. These federal protections are immutable regardless of VDH guidance or desire for policy alignment or the school operation suggestions of local pediatricians. As Secretary French underscored this in a communication to superintendents in September of 2022. It's also important to note that the National American Academy of Pediatrics has been steadfast in their messaging. Last month, they renewed their emphasis on protecting children with special healthcare needs, calling on all healthcare providers in schools to prioritize the needs of children with disabilities and address inequities attributable to poverty, racism and ableism, ableism during the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, stating, quote, "At a time when children are being hospitalized at an alarming rate due to a surge of illnesses nationwide, the guidance observes that children with special healthcare needs are especially vulnerable. These children are more likely to experience significant disruption to their daily lives as a result of the COVID pandemic with consequences that may include delayed development, reduced learning and mental health challenges. This includes mitigation of community and school-based transmission, individual protection against disease, protection of workforce and access to all needed services, including school and childcare." And I quote, "Schools should prioritize special considerations for in-person learning for children and youth with special health needs, including surveillance of community levels of COVID-19, onsite testing, use of face masks, reasonable accommodations and mental health support. Education is particularly critical and communities must prioritize these populations by taking all steps necessary to suppress community transmission and giving school districts the resources needed to conduct education safely during the pandemic. Inequities are particularly salient in education." And in September, the National Council for Independent Living issued a statement for educational settings reiterating that virtual learning and homebound instruction should be used rarely and are unnecessary when layered prevention strategies are employed to protect high-risk students. "We humbly request that the board and district revisit their current policies and practices when it comes to providing accommodations and modifications to protect and center the needs of your most vulnerable students. In closing, I'd like to leave you with the first two lines of your district's DEI statement. This district is committed to using education, conversation, collaboration and kindness as tools to advance equity, justice and respect for all people. We will continue to examine our own experiences and biases so that our practices and decisions are not aligned in any manner with prejudice, inequality and the marginalization of individuals. Thank you."
Okay, uh, would you be able and willing to share?
Yes, I will send those momentarily.
With. Thank you very much.
Would you get some clarity on where Kate is speaking?
Um, yeah, I were able to hear Chuck's question.
Yes, I am the pandemic equity coordinator with the statewide Vermont Center for Independent Living. Our main office is based in Montpelier, although we have five offices um, around the state and we serve um, all individuals, including students with disabilities around the state.
So when you said we, you're speaking of your organization.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much for sharing um, your thoughts and uh, get those electronically. It'll be really helpful. So thank you. Anyone else uh, who has a community comment or a community comment to represent? Hearing and seeing none, uh, we'll consider community comments closed. And we will move on to the next item on the agenda, the Smiley principals report.
Hi. So I have introduced myself as everyone now. I'm not moving, I don't know. So the people are like, hi, I'm Derek Howard on the new principal at Smiley Memorial School. Um, I wrote a, a principal report for you, really outlining the first few months being in position. Um, so I hope you've received it. And really, if there's any clarifying questions around the things I wrote, then um, I'm open to questions.
Chuck. Can you generalize to the board kind of what the capacity of the school is and what your current class sizes are?
So it, I, um, don't know if you want to help me with this because again, being opposed, but um, I think the ideal scenario would be to have a full class of between fifteen and twenty students um, for every grade. Um, pre-K through, through four, that would be the ideal scenario.
And you've got seven classrooms.
Seven classrooms. We have a, a very large multi-use space, every gymnasium, a library um, as additional spaces to those shit.
So you could handle another thirty or forty students.
Absolutely. And also, um, I think one thing the pandemic taught us is we can also use the, the outdoors as learning spaces. I think we have a lot of opportunities here to grow the, to combine the academic classroom learning with the outdoor learning and we have space to utilize here as well. I, I wish and I hope in the future we can do a tour of the outside because we have two really amazing uh, outdoor learning spaces. And there's also, we take the students onto some neighboring land and I'm a parent as utilize this uh, really powerfully um, to, to again, promote the outdoor learning. So not only have we got the school capacity, but the capacity of using the outdoors as well.
So you've got five, five classes and seventy-nine kids. It's about it's your average, average fifteen. Or uh, I think what we've heard before is that in a class of fifteen and three or four out, you can have a social, almost a social. Uh, you still have enough kids to play.
Yeah, it, so for, for my daughter, being a parent, small classes are ideal for a learning environment. And in classrooms, we're encouraging teachers to do centers work and have students working in small groups. So there's some real benefits left for our students. And so obviously, if that becomes out there. And so we constantly obviously want to grow our student population. But also being a small school has a lot of benefits as well.
Yeah. And talking to your report about play, that was very interesting.
At fifty-three, Chuck, I still play. And it's so powerful every day alone. And I think all the things that I do now as an adult, the, the most powerful is I learned from was going out and experiencing them. We um, with um, when you think about the pandemic, when a lot of families were isolated, students were isolated. We are seeing that effect in some of our students, that time they didn't get to interact, learning to win and lose, learning to upset their friends and how to put that right. That is a really powerful, um, powerful thing in anybody's growth. So and, and then as adults, we go into athletics, we go into sport, but it all starts as, as play. When we go into the outdoors and we do the outdoor learning, really we're just playing outdoors. So.
Awesome, awesome. Can you talk about your pre-K offering here?
Yes, in, in what way? Can you, um, what was you wanting to expand on?
Uh, are they four days a week, two days a week? Is it one classroom mode? Yeah.
So we have one classroom. We have uh, um, four-year-olds who are in four days a week and then our three-year-olds are in two days a week.
Oh, so you've got six grades.
Yeah.
And seventy-nine students. So that's like about fourteen, fifteen per class.
But not everybody, not, not everybody sends a pre-able to pre-K. Uh, but yes, we have.
Yeah, yeah.
How many classrooms we have K-four? Are there some combined like?
Yeah, we have a, a K-one, a one-two, a three-four and a four. Sort of, um, that, that's the, the combinations. We have a really small, here we have a really small third grade and a really large fourth grade.
Does the combined classrooms new for you? Have you done that before?
Um, yes, it's new to me, but um, again, I'm unbelieving. If you think about the oldest in third grade, they, they might be closer to a fourth grader. We, we're accommodated to every student's needs. So and, and teachers here are very, very good at giving students what they need and meeting the students where they're at. Yeah. For me, age is, is a number. It's about the experience they've had leading up to that age group. Yeah. I'm not, I'm pleased, I don't think I'm, I'm saying that multi-age teaching is easy because it really isn't, especially at the young, younger ages. Us, our teachers skilled at it and also there's benefits to it.
Yeah. I know there's benefits to it, but yeah.
All right, any other questions or comments on the Smiley report? Um, they're here more remotely.
I just had another question about pre-K. I know um, last year for pre-K, there was more demand than there were spots available. And I wonder, I wonder if anyone was supposed to come over to Smiley for that. And I, I had heard that they had enough demand in pre-教室 or that they, if they had been able to find another teacher, they would have felt like a homework, a whole additional classroom. That was just anecdotal. But I wondered if, if there's folks who are choosing to come to pre-K and.
We have had kids from other, from Richmond come here. I don't know about last year, but we do open it up.
Yeah.
Um, and I don't think the waitlist was, I'd have to look on how big the Richmond was.
Yeah.
Waitlist was.
It's significant from what I heard.
Richmond Elementary uh, is pretty full, right?
I would say, yeah, we um, we added three, there's three preschools there that weren't there, you know, twenty years ago. So we've like quadrupled our, our capacity at preschool.
Um, it's full in second, third and fourth grade too.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're, the class sizes are reasonable.
Yeah.
Um, certainly within our policies, the ones here are too. Um, preschool is a little bit different in that you might have a smaller class, you know, than fifteen even in Richmond or or Underhill ID or Huntington. Um, that's not a typical because there's different ratios, whole different rules than um, than, than here, than, than K-four.
And I fully understand if you don't have the answers to this, but are, are you seeing a lot of growth from the top of the mountain?
No, I mean, no, we're not right now. We're some, yeah, but it ebbs and flows. You know, I've been here a long time. So, you know, we've had three and we've had twenty. Literally, so, but we do try to um, you know, I don't want to belabor preschool, so, but uh, you know, we have, we have, we have a hundred and seventy private partnerships too that are, so that's actually bigger than their, now it's gotten bigger than our school-based programs. So, you know, we're serving almost eighty-five percent of all the eligible kids.
Uh-huh.
That varied, yeah.
When you say private partnership, you mean like a reimbursement goes to a private practitioner? Is that right?
Yeah, it would have to be, they have to have a licensed educator, yeah.
Yeah.
So we're, 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 you know, our community, our school community is serving a lot of kids.
With a Chover and those.
We added another preschool ID, which we, you know, about that's not, that's old news. And uh, so, but there's, you know, there we're, we're able to serve a lot of kids, but I'm sure there's some that, you know, that we're, that we're not able to. Back one sixty-six was supposed to, was really intended to be a partnership because they knew that schools wouldn't be able to serve every preschooler, just too many. And so it was really meant to be um, create a system where really encouraged the, the private providers to have high-quality educational programs. We're fortunate in our area. We have, we have a few.
And Chuck at Richmond, the part two program has private preschool within the school. So it's, it's.
So it's it's been helpful for young families to be able to have your child go for a half day in their public classroom and the rest of the day with her too. That Derek and I were talking about that earlier when we were on the tour. Just we don't have a lot of expanded after-school and pre-k programs.
The reality of that program is that they turned down a lot of families and that a lot of families are excluded from the public preschool program because part two won't make space for them either after school or during Wednesdays. So I actually think that program uses the public school facilities to the benefit, but doesn't adequately accommodate a lot of working families in our district personally. And I think that's because of staff. I think that over the years, I've watched them lose a lot of staff.
Yeah, but then they also compete with, they do compete to a degree with our public program by directing people into their full-time program.
I think we're veering off. Be a good one to put this be agenda for for a future agenda, but I think so. Any other questions for Derek while we have him on the hot seat? And I just want to thank you for hosting us, for giving us the tour, for your report. And you see what happens when we have a discussion with you. We think about other things. So possibly thank you for setting our agenda for another meeting. Okay, so. Yeah. Yep, you can stay with us. Okay, so. Okay, sorry. You're welcome to stay and you're welcome to leave.
Can I just stay for?
You can stay for as long as you want. Fair warning, it may not get any more exciting than it already has. But it's your school. You can be here as long as you want. All right, we'll work on that for the next principles report to introduce the.
Yeah.
You can leave or you can stay. It's up to you. All right, six fifty-five. We're a little bit behind, but we'll see how we get through this item and get back on track. So brief introduction. This is on the agenda of Board Compliance Discussion of Governance Management Governance Process Policies. This is an agenda item where we're basically reviewing our board policies to say, are we doing what we said we were going to do? And some of us thought about how to assess that because we've been thinking about how to assess that ever since we picked up policy governance. This time around, Andrew led the charge, drafted a survey, and a couple of us tweaked it a little bit. Survey went out last week. I think we had twelve respondents of sixteen, fifteen board members plus one superintendent. And I think our, I just want to get aligned on the objectives for tonight. We're going to review the results, allow for some discussion, and collectively figure out if there's any actions or next steps needed. Is that fair?
I think just a little bit of history is important. The when we first adopted policy governance, we were doing reports, policy reports. The board was doing reports on all of the, all of these policies. And we didn't feel as though it was a great use of time, a floor time, because it took a lot of work. And so when we revised the, all of the policies included the executive limitations, it was June of last year. One of the changes that we made was instead of having reports written on these policies, we would have a survey and talk about it once a year, which is what we're doing today.
That's my my take on it.
So I think that would have been really helpful. Instead of, I mean, personally, I opened this was like, what is this? These are worded in a way that seemed kind of cryptic to me. And that was after I chaired the AdCom policy. So right, like this was unexpected. Some warning about like, okay, we're actually doing this now would have been great to prepare and then to have the objectives set to us beforehand to come here prepared to have this discussion rather than here's some questions, answer them, and then we'll engage. Just for next year.
Yeah, I mean, and and we can talk about it. I think if they want to do another round, now that we have the the objectives better communicated, we can do that. Why don't we look at the results? And then, you know, each one of them, do we want to have a discussion on each one or get through them and then discuss what you think?
I know I was caught off guard in terms of not being prepared when we saw that that was coming up in the next agenda at the last meeting. So I'll apologize for the crypticness, but I basically copied and paraphrased what I thought was a reasonable survey of the policies for us to look at. I haven't done any preparation in terms of how we're going to talk about this. And this is our first time around. I really kind of wish that our policy governance committee had thought to thought to address this a year ago when we were talking about this stuff.
Right, or we could have decided as an AdCom group together again and engaged everybody in that group.
Okay, so, you know, I think there were six or seven questions and then there was an open comment. Many comments were received. I think the the only thing we've done so far is taking the results and putting them into this document. I haven't shared the document with anyone here. I saw it a few hours before the meeting, but that's it. So these would be real-time results. I'm not sure how prepared people would be to even talk about the results, you know, right now. But we do have some time on the agenda. I think we could go through each one and look at what the respondents had to say. Maybe there's, there might be a couple either in the comments or in the pie chart where we can say, you know, this might be something that requires some more attention that we want to work on for the year. Again, I only got the one eye, but I'm seeing this chart. It's like, you know, majority of people were okay with it. Maybe the a couple of people who said no or were unsure, you might be able to help decide if it's a yes or no, and then we move on. I think that's the intent of what we're trying to do on on this agenda.
Should we make that bigger?
I do not want to read it because. As the board develop policies and objectives that serve as organizational guardrails that limit the superintendent may exercise in choosing the organizational means. So what does this mean to you? Did we set up policies that structure how we work with the superintendent? Does anyone want to try to represent those who were not sure about whether this was a yes or a no? Or after that interpretation and our description of the objectives, are we okay to say, I guess this is this is in place?
Yeah, I see. I I think that what was, after I read it a few times, I understood, oh, these are just yes or no questions. They're not meant to be interpreted as like, do I know which which words were said to identify, you know, who's to know that we had done this process and make sure that I understood that I participated in conversations in which we set forth these guardrails? And in reflection, I wondered if that was something that people who felt unsure about might not have understood about the question. You know, they weren't just like, did we do this or not?
Anybody else want to engage on this? Anyone remote have any thoughts on this question? Okay. Different colors, same pie chart. I'll read this one. Does the board ever prescribe organizational means? EG direct the administration on how to handle day-to-day operational issues that have been delegated to the superintendent? So my interpretation of this is what's in parentheses in terms of are we, you know, meddling in the day-to-day activities or we're keeping our and not just meddling in the day-to-day activities, basically overlapping what we expect the superintendent to do. Majority of the respondents said no, which is what we want. Couple of people said unsure. Any discussion on this one? If anyone feels like going through this is not a good use of time, please. Okay. Anybody want to leave this one?
Does the board view successful superintendent performance as adherence to policies? And by progress towards or accomplishment of board stated objectives?
Pretty sure what that means to me.
To me, I I still take a step back and try to understand what our objectives as a board are. Because even though we had a retreat, had some discussion, I still think it's unclear as to what our true objectives are. But right, that question to me, it says, are we adhering to that?
Are are we viewing superintendent performance, successful superintendent performance as adherence to our policies and by progress towards accomplishment of board stated objectives? Back when this was a first-pass policy, we didn't have the progress towards or accomplishment of board stated objectives. We had only policies. And the board, through the course of development, has said, well, we want to gauge performance based on both policies and the other votes of objectives. So does the board feel like we're doing that? Are we, you know, are we taking assessment of the superintendent's performance, whether it be ad hoc or at the end of the year, formal review? And we're looking at it in terms of adherence to policies and board stated objectives.
And I think when you heard for some newer folks who were not here pre-pandemic or don't have anything to bounce that off of, right, in the two years that I've gone through superintendent's performance, it's not been what you were doing pre-pandemic. So right, like having that kind of question is challenging for me because, you know, all I have to gauge it on is are we through a pandemic? Did our superintendent do everything we needed to to successfully guide the district through this?
Yeah.
Right, because we weren't doing any PG monitoring or getting reports on normal business.
I think the weight kind of shifted to board stated objectives, which was get through the pandemic.
Right, right.
Yeah. Okay. Any comments on this one before we move on? Well, I'm just curious. I don't know if Tom can weigh in, but when I think about board stated objectives, this to me sounds like what Tom has been asking for. What are those objectives and how do they merge with the work that John has done, Superintendent's Office has done? Let's see, Tom's on there. So that that was where my confusion was, is I don't actually know if we have established any board stated objectives other than getting a pay gap.
For I really disagree with that. And we have six really clear, short-term objectives that are the superintendent's responsibility. And, you know, we've got a very thorough report. I think the one bit of color I would add to that is I feel like the binary, the report is of this binary. We accept it or we don't, which I think is really, you know, kind of hard to incorporate. You got to use some judgment in terms of the superintendent's evaluation. I think what I certainly have a fever for, it was the longer-term objectives beyond a couple of years out, but don't necessarily involve immediate, you know, results or performance, the annual performance on the part of the superintendent. But I feel I feel really clear that we have six, you know, primary objectives that the superintendent is working towards right now. And I feel like he's done a really good job making sure his staff understands what those six are. And if if anybody in the community walks up to anyone else and asks what our top priorities are for this coming year, every one of us should know what those six are. And they're really, I think, extremely well stated. What we don't have is the the board work on what happens after, you know, you know, after the next two or three years. But I I I'm quite sure I will.
I think maybe in some, some people, I mean, I read the kind of board stated objectives and I and I felt like those six objectives that we've aligned with came to us from the superintendent. So maybe some of us interpret those as superintendent objectives, not board objectives. Chuck, you've adopted them. I'm not sure if the board has ever formally adopted them.
Yeah, we accepted them. We did. Absolutely.
Through the reports we got from John, so might be pedantic. Let's give Tom a chance to speak up. Go ahead, Tom. George.
Thanks. Yeah, and I think there's a great conversation to have. And I think that it, you know, there's a few of these questions that this pertains to. So good for us to just have it upfront. And I agree, you know, that John has spent a lot of time thinking through, you know, the six or so objectives that he has set or priorities, I think he says, for the district. And and I do think you're, you hit it right on the head there, Kevin. We have not. We had to look back through the minutes and probably watch our, watch these things to know exactly what we did in terms of adopting them. But I do think the next step here is for us to be thinking holistically about, okay, we have long-term and short-term objectives or we want to set them, right? And how does the superintendent's priorities fit into this? I don't think that I I wouldn't, I don't recall us formally adopting them. If we had, and maybe we did, what we'd want to do, that I know we don't have, is to set measures, set checkpoints, you know, and to actually, you know, get some more formal reporting on those. I think, or maybe a little more clarity than some bullet points and some really great descriptions from John about what these are. So I think there's a process that we've yet to build. And I know that we just passed these new priorities, or sorry, new policies, I don't know, six or eight months ago. So but I do think that we're identifying some gaps here. And that's that John has identified priorities. They're good ones. We like them generally. Do we want to formalize those as board objectives? I think that's an open question. And then and then we have to say, okay, right, what is that reporting that we look for? What is kind of that measurement that we're looking for for success? So I'll end with that for now.
You tell.
Very beginning of the budget process.
Sorry, Chuck. John, do you have anything?
Just briefly, to give a little bit of history, the ends were, there was a lot of objectives in the ends. And those were the district goals and priorities. Those have changed. Then, you know, that's important to know. But when we, and I reported out on the ends when the board has asked me to. So I guess I would be cautious about deviating from those ends, you know, and and doing something very different. We reported out, I don't know, maybe a couple of months ago and offered a lot of data on making progress towards those ends. So when those were approved, those were the district priorities. And those are the, what the school district wanted kids to know and be able to do. Possibly that's changed.
Ryan, you have your hand raised. Or George?
Thanks. Oh, sorry, I'm hearing that echo that you get. So when I looked at this, what I thought was the, as John said, that we do on our annual review, look at John's adherence to the policies and progress towards general ends. An accomplishment of board-stated objectives, I really interpreted that, and that may be just my fault. I really interpreted that, and that may be just my fault, is that there are sometimes other things based on the year, based on COVID, based on certain situations, that were a short term objective. And those also went into reviewing the superintendent's performance for that year. That's how I interpreted it, and I felt like in the past years, we have done that, when we have done the superintendent, superintendent performance. So that aside, on the other point, when Chuck has brought up the six objectives, goals that we, that he feels that we should all be able to rattle off, I would like to be able to locate them, if that is something we have approved, on the website. I've looked for them, I can't find them. So again, you know, in terms of remembering exactly where and when that occurred, and what we did with that information, other than listen to it in a presentation, it sounds like there are different board members who may feel or remember things a little differently, so I just we can put that aside for now, but I think that that's something I do want to return to at another point, because I like to, if those are truly our objectives, they should be easily accessible to us and the public.
Thank you, Diane. Maybe to wrap this discussion up on this question, any other comments for the board? Kind of focused on the superintendent performance piece of the question, not what are the board stated objectives? Because I think there's another question where we can continue that discussion. Not seeing, I see one.
Suggestion, it could be that superintendent's report or the board agenda was organized around those six priorities. Then we would have, you know, kind of an ongoing reminder of what they are. And we would be able to kind of follow on an ongoing basis, the superintendent's progress in the, you know, kind of in each, in each of those areas.
You're suggesting more reporting routinely on those objectives.
You know what, just organizing the agenda that way, it could be that there's some, some months, there's nothing to say. But the superintendent's report or something organized around those six, and you just stick in whatever you got to say, and you're supposed to, you know, kind of, there's other stuff. And maybe there's only a comment on two of the six in a particular month.
Okay, thank you. And Tom, last comment on this one?
Yeah, I would just say, I think generally, this is the intent, I would say, I agree with, with the statement that this is the intent of the process. I recall in the past, there's been some conversations about the process through which we come up with the superintendent's evaluation. And so I just want to flag that I think we have talked about process improvements there before. I can't recall what they all are at the moment, but I do think that it is worth kind of just providing that feedback and that reminder that I think, I think part of it is around engaging the broader board a little bit more, the development of that, and, and I think providing some more time to review ahead of approval.
That's the goal every year. Thank you, Tom.
What'd you say?
It's the goal every year, the end of the year just comes up faster than we ever, we always expect, but I agree with, I agree. Okay, thank you. Can we move on to the next one, please? Maybe we've been into another question. Jeff, can you scroll back down?
We really reached far enough.
Page two. All right. Anybody want to take this one? Of all policies that instruct the superintendent, been monitored at a frequency and by a method chosen by the board. What does that mean to you?
I'm pretty sure I'm orange.
Yeah.
Anybody want to try a limited interpretation of this, so we can get the discussion going?
I think I would maybe interpret it as like, do we check in with the superintendent about whether he's doing his job on a regular basis? Maybe how I think I interpreted it.
Is, and I would, I would say, yeah, you're right, but another way, is the superintendent giving us the feedback that we need when we're asking for it, to make sure that he's complying with those policies? So are we getting enough information, is it the right information that we're asking for, or do we need to improve that? There were a lot of unsures, so only one person said no.
Kevin? Yeah, so it's, you know, we both pre pandemic and post, the, at the beginning of the year, typically with the leadership group, they designate the policies that I'm going to report out or provide a monitoring report. So they provide an annual calendar. That annual calendar is what you see, you know, the ones that you see at the, that are annual are in our meeting schedule. That's the way I interpreted this, that the board designates, these are the policies, you know, each year you're going to report out on, and I do it. For whoever does it.
Thank you, John.
I would say, just as importantly, that we're, we're operating in a climate where we the relationship between the board and the superintendent and administration is such that whenever the board asks a question, it's a very thorough and report and information that I think we have a lot of confidence in. And which I think is kind of what this, you know, the whole policy approach is trying to kind of enforce, but you know, beyond that, I feel like there is just open and, and you know, communication with the administration that we can have a lot of confidence in.
Thank you, Chuck. Does anyone have any thoughts on why this might be a no after the discussion we just had? Okay, I think we can scroll to the next one.
I would, I actually would just add, and I think that maybe newer members may have more to say, but I've been here for a little while. Can you kind of scroll back up, sorry, I may use that language. Thank you. So I do think that there has, there can be some confusion as to the process of monitoring it, and I think that the conversation today took care of some of that, and there is a policy that, that does talk about how we're going to monitor these. But I think that the frequency is something that is a little more, you know, it is, I think, centralized at the leadership level, and it, and it may make sense for us to be a little more transparent about what that process is, I know it may be in the agenda, you know, the year's agenda. But it may just be something worth spending a tiny bit more time on at the beginning of the year, so that we kind of, it may be an opportunity to weigh in beyond just the board leadership, at what do we think we need to hear a little bit more of this year?
Point, Tom, I mean, that agenda comes out pretty quick, especially if you have a new board member, and you don't really know what it means. But just to reiterate what John said, John reports what's, what's in that report, based on what's in that agenda. When we set up that agenda for the year, we say, here's what we're going to monitor, and the board accepts that agenda. As long as he reports back to us, this one is met. So we have to make sure at the beginning of our annual year, to make sure that everyone on the board understands that that calendar is defining the, the frequency and what policies are going to be monitored. Andrew, I saw your hand, and I think I heard Diane's deeper first, so we'll go Diane, then Andrew, and that doesn't, it's still more discussion, we'll move on after that. Go ahead, Diane.
Sure, I chose the word unsure, because I was focusing also on the word method. And I've heard a lot of people talk about, you know, certainly some of the new people, what are these reports, why reports? So method is also, you know, a piece of that, and I'm not sure that everybody's on board with the methods, I just want to bring that up.
Thank you, Diane.
I was just going to say that I think it's, it's always a challenge when the annual board calendar comes out in May or June, particularly because of the time of the year. And there's so much on that calendar, and we're not only talking, when are we going to meet, where are we going to meet, what's going to be on the agenda? But another important piece of that is what we brought up today, and that's just what I want to reinforce, is that when John gets that board calendar for the upcoming year, that's when he starts thinking about when he's going to do what reports. And we need to be conscious of that when we're making that decision, and we haven't really talked about it.
But spoken by somebody who has tried for many years back in the past to figure out which policies will be monitored, when it's not it's not straightforward, I'm not sure for the time, and we're also trying to do some superintendent performance, so thank you, Andrew, for sharing that. Okay, I heard no beeps, I see no hands, we will now make one more attempt to scroll down. And we could move from a pie chart to a column chart, just to keep it interesting. This was a three part question, I believe. So if you've been holding out, thinking one is going to be easy, this is not your chance, but does anyone want to take this one and maybe read it and share in your own words what it means to you? Somebody from remote?
Does the board communicate to the community its role, responsibility, and accountability for district direction, policies, and performance?
You want to take a stab at how you interpret that?
I haven't finished A P Lit yet, so.
Well, I mean,
I mean, I would think that, from my perspective, it's really about like, community engagement, and I think that while I'm not on the committee, I you know, kind of looking at, even in a conversation I had with Mike Weston this morning, how the community historically and now presently kind of communicates what's going on, and it means to people that are being affected by budgeting and other events.
And I think by looking at those bars, the columns, I should say, I think this is one where, you know, maybe not the vast majority, but clearly there's work that we need to do better on this one. Around communicating to the community.
Well, so many, so many of the previous responses were unsure, sorry, I didn't raise my hand, that it doesn't surprise me, probably shouldn't surprise anyone else, that if we're unsure about a lot of things, then our ability to effectively communicate those things is naturally rather included.
Thank you. So I don't know how much solving, right, this one we need to get into today. But perhaps, you know, what, what can we do, what focus or additional work can we do in the, in the coming year? To try to get the more blues than reds, maybe that's something we can talk about here.
Yeah, when I read this, I immediately reflected on the engagement committee. And I just, again, like, sometimes when I rethink like that, this wave of responsibility comes over me, because the community engagement committee has several directions at which it could go. But at the end of the day, it seems to always be like the solution for many of the conversations that we have about getting our role, responsibility, and accountability for district direction, policies, and performance out to the community. And so I think it, there will be a time, and I'd be trying to kind of engage as a whole about this in the beginning of the school year, where the, the board and the community engagement committee has to reflect on what the real role is, and determine if the policies and the mission of our committee align with what we want to see. Because the surface, our role is to find engagement opportunities and present them to all of you, and your job is to engage. So there's a great part of me that wants to be more involved in getting information out, I think it's important part of my goal is thinking about our website, and we see that definitely aligns with this, I just wanted to kind of address that.
Sure, thank you. And Tom, something to add on this one?
Uh, yeah, I'll keep it brief. Katie, don't take all this weight on your shoulders, I, I really think this comes back to, we have to set board, set priorities and objectives for the district. If we have those, that'll help kind of us figure out what our work is on a month to month, year to year basis, and allow us to find those natural points for communicating with the community. Right now, we, we just, there's just not as much, I think, for us to communicate with, that really a lot of the action is happening at the superintendent and leadership level and in the, in the buildings, and that's wonderful, and they're doing great communication. We don't have a lot as a board, I think, to communicate to, that's different than what is already being communicated to the community. So I really think it comes back to, let's set some objectives, some priorities for the district, and then, and then build, I think, as you were saying, kind of build your work around that and build our collective work around that.
Thanks, Tom. Chuck?
I think we should abolish the communication committee, I feel like this is board work. Yeah, the lead communicator to you know, to the public should either be the board chair, the executive committee, or maybe there's a kind of informal chairperson for each community, you know, there's five people in Jericho, three in Underhill, and four in Richmond, and one of them is responsible for, you know, ongoing, you know, kind of communication of what's going on in the, you know, it's just, it's just too convenient, whenever a little work comes up, it's, oh, like, actually go, you know, get. I mean, if you look at what the role of the board is, this is not committee work. This is board leadership work. I think the engagement committee can't speak for the board, which kind of limits the, you know, the potential, you know, it just, I think, you know, I think we're, I think this is like, one of the two or three main jobs of the board itself.
Thank you. Anyone who thinks yes, want to explain their rationale for why the board is doing this? There are five of us helping.
That defeats the anonymity point of this.
I know, we didn't, I mean, it's anonymous until you choose it not to be.
Well, I voted yes. I feel like I'm feeling it.
All right, thank you, Diane, go ahead.
I think we've actually done a pretty good job of communicating out when we talk about pushing information out. The problem for me is that when I talk to community members, I don't see it reflected back. So even though it's there and it's available, I don't feel like it's been sort of accessed and able to be reflected back, so I get disappointed in that part, but communication's a two way street. Just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, thank you, Diane, and, and I'm, I'm one of the, I'm sorry, I'm one of the yeses as well, and, you know, I, I look at it, again, as two way street. You know, there's, there's a push to send information, there needs to be pull, you kind of receive the information, and it's a balance, you're trying to gauge year after year, how, how much does the community want to know? How engaged do they want, or do we feel they need to be based on what's going on in the district? There are times when there's big things going on in the district, and we kind of ramp up. And then there's times when we're going to just hunker down because we're trying to get through pandemic. So I, I felt like, you know, I evaluated this probably more over, over broader time period than just looking one year back, but relative to, can we mobilize our communication when we need to? Did we do that effectively during pandemic? With how we try and streamline communication to the community? And I, and I felt like that, you know, deserved a yes. However, when it comes to the specifics in this question around district direction, policies, and performance, specifically performance, which got the majority of the notes, I might have been one of the notes I don't remember. I don't even know what, what kind of performance we would be communicating. So I think we do have work to do there, but, but I kind of thought in general, the intent, I felt like we, we have been communicating what needs to be communicated, so that was my perspective from the chair of the meeting. Ethan, you were next. So that was my perspective from the chair of the meeting. Ethan, you were next.
I'm on, I'll go for you. Thank you. So I, I would say, I don't agree with abolishing community engagement, but I do agree that this is broad board work, and that this is something that we all own as being board members, and so I would echo Tom, Tom's comment about, Katie, you know, illness, or just community engagement illness, but you are part of that group that is maybe spearheading the efforts, that is leading the charge, much like the finance community doesn't decide on the budget, they work on the budget, and then you all have to agree to it. I do think, Kevin, it might be easier for you to give it a longer-term view about success because you've been on the board longer, so someone who is new doesn't have that perspective. Maybe all of that for a couple of years. I I do think that ramping up for big things is very true. I think that's where the miss is though, because an active board that's communicating well is communicating the little details. And I'll just reflect on kind of the couple of board meetings ago, where we were sort of like, you know, talking in a big state, but like, we got like big things coming in, and some of us were just like, why are those big things? Like, you know, I was sort of caught in the details, and then thinking about, okay, what is that bigger detail that I'm missing? So I think this conversation, an ongoing conversation about what is our role? What is our responsibility, and how do we keep ourselves accountable to direction, policies, and performance? That would be, you know, and, and I'm going to weave this in to my first question, and just say, like, I think I see John as part of the board, even though I know that there is a separation there. So when we look at the priorities that you put together, I do think those are board priorities. They're stemming out of one direction. And, and how do we build in, kind of like what Chuck was saying, how do we build that conversation into every meeting? Where do we, where does it come out? Because we all really like the discussion, we want to make sure that we take action out of it, but it does feel like conversation is sometimes like you're like just trying to get to it, and then you get started, and then it stops, and then you got to come back to it a little bit later, so. Yeah, thank you. You had kind of your, your side.
Thank you.
I will say that I have to give the policy evidence before coming here, so I think this might be the only thing I can really chime in on. But what I will say is that I have made a great effort as the student representative for the school board to really communicate, you know, what's going on and what I see happening at meetings. And, you know, encouraging students to look at the agenda and figure out what that means. And I think that, you know, as I can only speak for my freshman year, because my sophomore, junior, and part of my senior, we're all messed up, but as a sophomore, you never really heard about this school. It wasn't just something you thought about, it wasn't something that was talked about, and I'm seeing it come up more. I guess I'm also taking more advanced classes, but more in my current language classes or government and policy classes, where we kind of talk about local government and what that looks like, and people really tying in, you know, the board agenda and other items. So that's been really cool to watch. You might not, you know, see it on the street, but we're talking about it.
Great, thank you. I don't, great.
I, I'd like to see us be a little more clear about who we're communicating to. You know, I think the board is accountable to all of the residents. It's, I don't believe it's our job to be communicating to parents. I do believe because we have parents on the board, the board is getting good feedback about communication that parents get from the district. But I think when we're thinking about kind of communication and, you know, and community engagement, our responsibility is to all of the residents, and it's the superintendent's job to be communicating with parents. I, I don't think, I think that's kind of where we are, but I think that we should be clear about that differentiation and responsibility.
Thank you. So I'll, I'll do the closing remarks on this one. I think this is at, at least so far that we've reviewed, this is one that we do need to relook in terms of getting calibrated as board members for what's good enough. I think asking board members to gauge whether we're communicating sufficiently with the community is a tough, is a tough gauge. And we, we each have our own perspectives of what is good enough. I think collectively, we need to work as a board to try to get these, these more blues and reds for, for next year. Katie, you're going to do all that, right?
Yeah, well, I think part of that is differentiating of, if you were to ask many people, they do not see a difference between the district and the board. So, you know, out in the community, so part of this work has to be, again, going back to these board objectives, differentiating ourselves from the communication. If anything, people, I get constant feedback that they hear from classroom teachers and from the administration more than they even need to or want to, so that, you know, this is where it becomes murky.
So I'll do one more wrap-up on this one. We do publish a annual report as a district. And John and his team put a lot of effort into that report. The board puts, you know, a couple pages of, of updates as well. You know, the delivery method may be questionable. I don't, I don't know if, how many people in our community actually go through that page by page, but I would just encourage everybody who was on the board and/or has stuck with us during this meeting, who's not on the board, to actually read that report, download it, or get an actual copy. If you haven't read it, I think you would be surprised at how much information is presented in that report. And, and maybe everybody has read it, but if there's any one of you who hasn't, please do this here, and, and perhaps maybe we'll get a few more blues, I don't know. Okay, so we'll wrap that one up. I think we have a few more. Most of this document, by the way, we're still on page two. Most of it are comments that people provided at the bottom. Some of them are more pointed than others. I don't know if board members would be comfortable kind of presenting their, their comments. I think these are three pages or so of comments that we might need to digest. Having looked through them already, many of the topics in the comments we've, we've covered. Andrew, you might have some things to pull out at the end that are unique and haven't been covered yet, but what I'd like to do is go through the questions, and then maybe any comments that were provided, you know, if board members who wrote them can raise them, or if there's some trends that we haven't covered, would you be able to try to represent them? I'm giving you five minutes, I'm giving you five minutes, notice.
I, I skimmed them.
Okay. So, Tom, do you have a comment on the?
Just a quick question. Would it be possible to actually share this document with all of us? Because it'd help us, it'd help me actually remember what I said in the comments.
Like right now?
Yeah, if, if Jeff, I don't know if Jeff is able to do that, or John.
Andrew will do it. Jeff is doing it right now.
Thank you.
Well, we get really confused. Yeah, don't send it there. You're tired just. All right, there, it's, it's there now, so if you can review and listen, power to you. Anyone want to take a stab at this one? We're back to a pie chart, and high percentage are in between the guesses, so this might be easy. Stuart? Do you feel a sense of group responsibility for governing? Oh, did Stuart go in there? He did, he tried. Geez, I'm sorry, Stuart.
You beat me to it. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
All right. Do you feel a sense of responsibility for governing and ultimately the success of the district?
All right, and what does that mean in your own words?
Yes.
All right, fair enough. That's it, here to move on. Anyone have any comments on this one? There was one, no. Anybody want to represent the no, or are we feeling okay to move on? All right, I think we can move on. This week, we asked. Are the policy, is it last one?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Are the policy goals, objectives, oh boy, there's our objectives again, and progress made toward meeting them reviewed by the board on an annual basis. Policy goals, objectives, and progress made toward meeting reviewed by the board on an annual basis. So this is a little bit, I believe, in my interpretation, is the self-making ice cream problem. So we are doing this kind of now, in some respect. We are reviewing our how we work, but there are other components of this as well that we do at different times. But the question for the board, the question I answered is, you know, do we check it? Are we making sure that we're, we're meeting them and reviewing what those goals and objectives are? I think this is where the board is somewhat split. And we've had discussion already on, you know, what are our near-term, the long-term objectives? Are they the six that John has presented to us or not? We don't need to rehash that. Does anyone have any other perspectives they wanted to share on this question, or feel like we handled it? Tom, you got anything?
Of course. I, I think on this one, we are obviously reviewing the policies. You know, on a, you know, this is what we're doing right now. The objectives we've talked a lot about, we, we don't, we have a couple objectives in, in my mind of what we've, the challenge is, we haven't actually determined what objectives really are. We haven't really operationalized them since we passed these policies. So I think there's, there's a lot of work to do to just kind of stand those up, but if I were to look back and say the couple objectives that I recall are, are racial justice statement and our COVID statement or, or objective, I'm forgetting what these things were called, resolutions. And I don't think that we have taken a look at those on an annual basis. And, and I think we have to talk about, you know, as we build out more of these objectives, do we review every single one? Are we taking them as a group or whatever? But I do think we have not reviewed those two things, and it may make sense for us to, to do that. So I just wanted to flag that, that these are different and not all taken together.
Thanks, Tom. So at risk of being overly summative, and not looking at the comments yet, we have two areas that were definitely highlighted in this survey. How we communicate externally to the community, and how do we check ourselves for, for progress towards these goals and objectives. Fair? More to that?
Well, I mean, I would certainly fill out a survey with something to say and looking for a question that would fit what I had to say, you know, and I'm, I'm quite sure I put that red here. You know, we might, and I didn't know it was going to be a comment section, you know, so it was like, I'm running out of survey questions. You know, my, my issue is the refusal on part of the leadership of the board to consider and discuss the future of the school district. And it's immensely frustrating. We have enormous big questions, and there is simply no appetite on the part of the leadership of the board to consider the future beyond the couple of years that John has laid out with the six objectives. And to me, that's immensely frustrating and a dereliction of duty to leave looking out beyond three or four years, where we are basically adrift, and we're waiting to see what happens.
Thank you, Chuck. So any other rich comments that folks want to share with the board before we conclude on this?
Yeah, that's okay.
Go ahead, Tom.
I just want to say that, you know, I think we were missing a question here, and we've talked a little bit about it already, but states that the board shall, I don't know if it shall, but that we have to set long-term and short-term priorities. We did not measure ourselves as to whether we've done that formally here. I think we've decided through this conversation that we have not yet done that. I think that we need to take a stand in this meeting and say, it is time for us to finally set a process for how we're going to do that. First, we had a meeting in August to start talking about this, then it was, well, let's talk about it at the retreat. We talked about it at the retreat, no progress. Last meeting, asked about it again, as well, we'll figure it out this summer. I think that as a board, we need to say, well, this is a priority for us or not. Do we actually want to set long-term priorities for the district, or even short-term for priorities that are board-led? These do not have to be scary. They can be very small. They can also be larger and multi-year. But we need to set up a process for doing this, and we need to do it now. We have policies that we are failing to meet. And, and it's time for us to actually do it. If we're going to, otherwise, let's go back and open up the policies again and take those pieces out. So I would love us to kind of maybe have that conversation tonight, see if folks agree with that. One thing, I was just kind of racking my brain about how can we actually maybe make this happen? And maybe it's, and it's something I think I brought up in the ad hoc policy governance conversation in the committee that I was on, was maybe we actually need to have an ad hoc committee on our, you know, priorities as a board or as a district. And maybe that's what we just need to do, whenever that stood up in the next couple of months, and have that conversation for a period of time, set this process, start to set these goals. I do think that they cannot just be set from the leadership, it has to be a collective process that includes anyone who wants to be a part of that as a board. Also understand, having a conversation about priorities can be daunting as a full 15-member board. So a little bit of venting, and then also a, a potential solution that I'd like to propose to, to the group.
Thank you, Tom. Yeah, I think, I think I had to share both sides of that, that topic with, with your comments. Before we keep moving on this, we have made it to, I think, eight o'clock on the dock. And that's not a time we've allocated to stay on the agenda. What's the, the general will of the board? We want to open up a topic on setting objectives, which Tom has introduced here at the, what I was thinking was the end, but he raised a good point, because that a question on here was, Doc, anything about, do we have our short-term, long-term objectives? But as Tom mentioned, I think we feels like the majority of the board would consider that no, he would like to work on setting those objectives now. We want to dive into that? I need some feedback.
Diane's hand is up, I think, so I'll let her go first, but I have something to say.
Okay, Diane, are you responding to my question or something else?
I was not responding to your question, so if you want a response just directly to your question, that that was not what I intended.
Trying to figure out, do we want to spend time now on this topic or table it, which is against what Tom's point was.
Yes, I would just, that's my point, is that Tom's question comes up again and again, and it's inefficient to keep raising the question and then moving on before we answer it, because then we just circle back and have the same half discussion again in three months. So we'll save more time if we take up the issue rather than backburnering it and revisiting it in two months.
Fair enough. So.
Does this come up now, or does it come up under new business? I mean, if we're following.
You know, I, 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 it's a good point, but I think, I think this agenda item was to gauge our performance. Not necessarily to, to solve the gaps in the performance. So if folks want to know my opinion, I would say this is something that we should take up as a separate item. I would feel much more comfortable having that with the actual chair present. But I understand that this is table in the topic for one more, if not another meeting, so if. You know, I'm just trying to. Oh, Edie has, Edie has landed. Hi, Edie.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Great, I have a mask on and I'm sitting in the airport, so. Hi. So I just wanted to say that one of the reasons, hello, everybody, one of the reasons that this, the priorities has been pushed, or I, I keep saying, let's do this in the summer, is because I think if we're looking at district priorities, we need to have the administration and school leadership be part of it. And that can't happen right now during the school year. We want them to be fully focused on it, and I don't know that that's possible right now because they're pretty immersed in what's happening. So I just wanted folks to understand why I said the summer, and if I wasn't clear about that before, I just want to be clear about that now. So, and I've only been on this call for, I don't know, five minutes maybe, so I've missed most of. So and I've only been on this call for, I don't know, five minutes maybe. So I've missed most of this discussion, and I don't want anybody to feel they have to rehash it because I can watch the video.
Okay, thank you, Edie. All right. I think folks are really following, following like me, which is we could jump in, but we've got things on the agenda. Yep, Tom.
The last thing we need to do is set what these priorities are tonight. So I just want to be clear. If that's what you're suggesting, I'm not for that. But what I am suggesting is that we come up with a plan for how we're going to engage this group. In setting up the process to come up with those priorities. I think, I hear you, Edie. I think that that makes some sense, that you need to think about when is the right time to engage. The right people. But I think that we need to be having those conversations now in terms of setting up what that process is going to look like. We we can't let this sit another, it's Allison's point, another few months before we're trying, we're dusting this conversation back up and saying, what are we going to? Do where have we been? I think we can actually have a group of board members right now, starting a conversation around. So like. What's the scope? Like, what do we want to do? And and not, and I'm not saying like very specifically, I'm saying like, are are we talking about? Short term policies? How does John's priorities work into here? Are we talking about long term policies? What's the contours of what these conversations might look like? Who should we engage? What, how should it kind of unfold? And I think that that those conversations can happen now in an ad hoc committee that could meet, you know, on a monthly basis for an hour. To start setting the foundation and and John and the administration can be a part of that, or they can, you know, be flies on the wall for that. And and join us when we start talking substance in the summer, which I think at this juncture maybe makes sense to wait for that more substantive stuff to come then. But we've got to know, we've got to have a platform for that conversation.
Thank you, Tom. Diane, is that, do you build on that or something new?
I think I'm building on it because I just wanted to point out that if we move with this conversation. We need to be able to clearly articulate why the ends that we created with under policy governance. Are not our goals and objectives. Because I feel like then you end up with a a set of ends and then you set up. Direction and you set up short term goals and long term goals. And just rereading all of those would probably make your head spin. I just want us to keep in mind policy governance. Had started us on that path by having ends.
I, can I just respond to that quickly?
Go ahead.
Because I think this is an example, and I and I hear you, Diane, I fully agree with you, and I I don't know that anyone would disagree. This is why having this conversation piecemeal here and there is not helpful. The, these objectives sit underneath the ends, right? This is how it was designed and the and the ad hoc policy committee. So these are building off of that. This isn't changing. You know, the ends in any, in any way, they stand, those stand in policy, they stand in stone until until changed otherwise by the board. This is is further expanding on different things we may want to do as a board, different things we may want to do as a district. That are ultimately in support of the ends. Everything we do is in support of the ends. But this is why we need a committee of folks to talk about this. To help set the foundation and make sure we're on the same page as we move forward. It worked really well with the ad hoc policy committee. We had very similar conversations to this. When we were saying like this PG thing isn't working for everybody and others were saying it works okay. And then we had a great dialogue where we said. Okay, here's what's working well. Here's what's tricky and how can we come together? It's very similar here. Let's set the boundaries. Let's set the definitions of what we're talking about. What is a short term objective? What is a long term objective? And and then we'll have a good solid foundation for the summer.
Okay, thank you, Tom. What's your attempt as to say?
I'll just give an example. What is our long term relationship with the other school districts that are around us? We are faced with. The need for complex and specialized solutions in many areas. But our school districts in Chippeland County and neighboring districts are operating in total silos with no board contact. You know, across, you know, across these other schools. I mean, is that acceptable to us? Or is there going to be a long term benefit to us to working and nurturing and finding ways? To communicate and build relationships and ongoing. You know, ongoing roles across the boards in Chippeland County. Personally, I think that's a really important thing for us to do in preparation. For things, mental health solutions, tech ed solutions, transportation, there's all kinds of things. That are each of our school districts are trying to solve independently that we could be working on kind of more jointly. So we should have, I believe, one of the six or seven important things for us to discuss is what is the value? To us extending ourselves across, you know, with the other school districts. You know, John is certainly, John and Andrew are certainly helpful in those conversations, but that's a conversation the board can have. You know, it's it's something that extends belong beyond the probable tenure of our administration. Possibly beyond the, again, beyond the tenure of many of us, but it's a point of view. That, you know, I think we should look at. We've learned a lot through the merger process within our district and why shouldn't any of the conclusions and the and sort of the fabulous. Things that have come out of that. Why wouldn't we want to consider? Not necessarily merging with other districts, but certainly working across the district. It's like, when do we ever have that conversation? And why doesn't our leadership? Why isn't the leadership of the board open to having conversations like that?
Okay, thank you. Edie, do you have any thoughts on what you heard or are you in a position to share or want to come back? First before responding?
No, I think that there's a lot of food for thought here and that. You know, we, there are lots of ways that we can do some of these things. I'm not sure that the time is at this meeting. Maybe it's the next meeting, we can talk about some of those things. I can definitely put it on the agenda, but I know that you said that eight o'clock was the time. I don't have the agenda in front of me. I apologize. That we had allotted for this and we're past that. So I think, you know, I think everybody's right. I think we have opportunities that we aren't taking advantage of. I think there are. A lot of ways that we can make the district do things better. I just. You know, I'm not like, let's do it without thinking. I'm about, let's have the conversation. Let's do it in a way that's going to be successful. So. I think that, yeah, I think there are a lot of really important points that are brought up here and that we can use them and make us better.
And we, as a leadership team, which I think I'm on. Can we commit to meeting before the next meeting and put together? A proposed plan and how or a broader level, our response to what we're hearing?
I think that sounds great, and we have three weeks between this meeting and next one, but probably a special meeting in between. So I think that would be perfect. We can totally do that.
I think topics are more important than the process because.
Well. Okay. We hear lots of topics, but if we don't have a process.
We hear lots about process.
I don't know how they're going to.
We refuse to talk about topics.
We talk a lot about topics that are. Okay, so I'm going to wrap this agenda item up. I feel like we can move on. And the next item.
Sorry, just before you move on, because we aren't looking at comments, which is probably a big part of that. Are we able to? Circle back to the comment at the next meeting as part of.
Yeah, what what I would suggest, review, review the comments. I asked people if they had a comment that wasn't represented. I know Andrew. I gave you a last minute thing to do, but we didn't get to him. I want to keep the flow of the meeting going. I think everybody needs to read the comments on their own. And if we have follow up at the next meeting around closure on these items or updates on these items, we can. We tackle that. That'd be great. Okay. The goal here is to keep moving.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm I'm in support of the.
Not not that it's not important, but I know we have.
I should do want to leave it there by just saying we're moving on and.
Yep.
We won't come back to that.
Good catch. Thank you, sir. Okay, so next item on the agenda is around the warning. I don't think this will be as contentious, but the most important thing of this is to understand. What's changing, what our decision points are and the timing of what's changing. So I'll turn it over to John to lead the discussions.
Okay. So in the agenda, you'll also see a summary that I linked to talk about Act four, H forty two. It's passed the Senate in the House. So at the governor's office, waiting for him to sign. He'll need to make a decision on that by Thursday, but he could tomorrow. And there's some key points in there. For the board to consider and then, you know. Would also offer some some commentary around that as well. So. In the letter I sent, some of the key provisions in Act forty two. They they allow a legislative municipal legislative body to move their annual meeting. Allows a municipal body like last year to put everything. Out as Australian ballot, which is what we've done the last two years. And. That these public hearings, which includes our board meetings, all our committee meetings. And any annual meeting can be done virtually. And it also suspends the. The school budget language around ed spending for equalized pupils. So you'll notice, and this has been something that we've talked about for a number of years on the equalized pupil front. That really, there's not a lot of coherence and consistency between that and the overall budget. Revenue that we don't know about. So right now, our surplus is going to be different. We have an estimate. So our ed spending for equalized pupils is either going to go up or down. And we also don't know what the transportation revenue is or tech ed. So. And this year in particular, when we talked about this in the budget process. The the tax rate, what we control is completely disconnected, you know, or very disconnected and confusing when you think about equalized pupils. So. You know, I think the board should really, and and it's not, it's going to be sunsetted. Next year. That was part of the the waiting study and the and the waiting legislation that passed. Act one twenty seven is that school districts are not going to be required to do that in FY twenty five. That, some of that makes sense.
I'll give it, I'll give it one more, one more attempt. We already signed a warning, right, that said we're going to, this is how the annual meeting is going to go. Some of it was going to be in person, some of it, unless we make a change, some of it is going to be in person. Some of it will be decided by Australian ballot. The budget article for the last five, six years has been mandated to have. Percent change of the ed spending per equalized pupil. And that's been in there as a two, a three, a six, whatever the number is. And. We've always felt like that was not a good indicator of what the actual impact is going to be on your tax rate. Because there's so many variables that are unknown at the time the warning is prepared. The things that John mentioned. Finally, the state has said, let's take it out. And the reason why I think we're taking it out this year is because of this surplus that's coming in that further makes the disconnect. So we have a couple of choices to make as a board. We could continue a status quo, which is have the meeting the way in which we've warned it and keep the language. On the ballot, the way in which we've signed it. There's nothing that would be against this change, assuming the governor signs. Right, Tom? Yes. Or we can kind of take that warning, rip it up and say, oh. The state legislature is allowing us to do our annual meeting differently. We're going to take advantage of it. We're going to move all the decisions to Australian ballot like we've done in the last two years. We're going to remove the statement that is not a good indicator, never has been in the budget. And we can have some of our meetings all virtually, like the information meeting from your virtual as opposed to required to have a in person meeting. So those are the key decisions that we need to make as a board. When the law is passed. Law is not passed yet. If we do, if we if we discuss, if the law is passed, are we going to change it? This is all process. Then we have to decide how are we going to get the warning signed. Before the thirtieth, which is when it has to.
Yeah, and there's, yeah, there's some real advantages this year to doing it as well. All Australian ballot, because there's a couple of questions on there. They're going to change the way we do business and you're going to get much more representative vote. If it's done by Australian ballot, then, you know, a handful of people that come to the.
So the leadership team and Edie will have a chance to talk here next, and then Andrew, I think we're recommending that we do take advantage of all of the recommendations. And redo the warning. After the governor signs it and before it's required.
So this requires a special meeting that Edie will do?
It it would require a, yeah, special meeting in the board. But of course, that could be a virtual meeting because the law allows for it. And since we all individually signed the warning, it could even be simpler than that. Our EDI, I think, is waving and.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So what I wanted to say is that my personal recommendation is that we only change the warning. In that we don't have the percentage attached to the. To the spending, to the ed spending, because I think that's the piece that is the least representative of. What is actually happening, happening with our spending. If we choose to vote by Australian ballot, we can't make any permanent changes to our voting. So I would still recommend that we hold our in person meetings so that we can long term change all of our voting district wide to Australian ballot and not put that off another year. I think we know how to get together in person. We can mass, we can. We can have the space for people to do that, and so I would recommend that we don't put that off one more year. So this would be a half change, right? Changing some of the warning, but not all of the warning.
So let me try to over explain that one. One of the articles that we have on a ballot is to move all of our decisions to Australian ballot. And Edie is saying that that wouldn't be allowed. Under these laws to put under Australian ballot because it's changing how we're voting. And there's some fine language that says you can't take advantage or you can't do that. So we would. I got you on that. So we would really like to get that article passed this year. So we can put everything to Australian ballot and board. If we don't get that article passed. Then we will continue to have to have an annual sit down meeting or anything but the budget. So. Is that?
I mean, that's fine with me. I don't, I just don't know. You know, I don't know if we couldn't put it on. The ballot.
Last year, we could not. Go ahead, Edie.
I I know that we cannot put it on the ballot. Sorry, there's a lot of noise here from happening here right now, but I did specifically ask about that, and they said longstanding changes cannot be made this year on Australian ballot. All of the changes that are ongoing, right? So for one year, they're giving us waivers to have Australian ballot votes. But if it's something that is ongoing, that has to be an in person meeting as stated in the original statute.
Okay, I'd send a draft to the attorney, but I have not heard back from them. So I'm sure you're right.
I I think that simplifies the decision for us quite a bit. But I would like to hear from anyone else who might disagree. Ease, call it soft motion, would be to just modify the. Budget, budget article to take off the wording about the ed spending for equalized pupil comparison. And we would do that again after the law is passed.
I would support that, even though I'm sure Dave Sharp would not be happy.
I would support that, even though I'm sure Dave Sharp would not be happy. How was this being?
Yes, sir. So either way, we can't take any action today. Well, the actually, the decision would be good, like, assuming the, assuming the law is passed. Can we get uh consensus from the board that this is what we'll do, because we're gonna have to act very quickly.
So can I clarify, we would be having a special meeting simply to remove that sentence that talks about. Spending from the budget?
Yeah, question. Yep. Modify the warning. I hope so. I think it will be shorter now. We would ever, we would need to have a quorum, you know, to make the official vote. And then anyone who couldn't make it, we could follow up with the special electronic method of signing it. All right, sweetie, we got. E D and then Chuck.
Just real quick, we do know that most of the other districts are going to remove that language already if this is passed. And I don't see how it's not going to be passed.
This is just a one, a decision, a one-year decision to remove cost per student.
Said spending pre-quali student, pardon, it's a, it's said spending for equalized student.
Right, and and we're making a one decision, your decision, because this is a very dear.
Yeah, I mean, there's just no congruence between that and all the other variables. And then when you add in common level of appraisal, it makes a word. I think to Chuck's point is next year, would we have to add it back in? No, no.
Why wouldn't we want? I mean, we're people in the long term, people are paying taxes based on that, right?
And a lot of other variables.
So it's no longer the case, we can no longer truthfully or accurately say that we pay taxes based on the cost per student?
It's one of the variables.
It's one. The the percent number, from my perspective, has never been a good indicator of reality. And so it's misleading.
The cost per student?
Yeah, the the percent change in cost per student from one year to the next does not represent what happens on your, on your tax bill. Because of all those other variables that come, that gets set between after we vote and when the bills go out. You're saying like, we could have an extra fifty students and the percentage. Yeah, the equalized per pupil spending could be the same, even though we're educating more students. Oh, and every district could pass a budget that's ten percent higher. In that case, the state has to raise more revenue than they initially planned, and that would cause a significant increase. To your tax rate than what was shown on the proposed budget, because it's based on what the state thinks will get passed for budgets. And that's happened, and also twice first. Many budgets were voted down, and so. You know, the tax rate shifted. And then the effects of CLA on your individual town tax rate. Given the um housing market inflation that has happened also. So is a variable. The idea is to warn an item that says this is what it's going to cost the district. To educate all of our students.
Like we did forever. That's it. Oh, yes, just that.
But just the fact that we need uh more students or lower our taxes is still true.
Well, all.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean.
It's a hard one to answer.
Well, if all the other variables were fixed, that's kind of how you have to look at it. Of course, if we had more students. Our cost per student would go down, and that is one of the factors of the deficit. But our total dollar amount of what it costs to run the district would necessarily change. Also, so to not, we had to add, exactly, stop it.
Exactly, yeah.
So.
That's right.
Good way to put it. And that's what the article had been before this mandate to put the percent change in.
Is there really some sort of explainer for people that they have liked to look at that or?
Yeah, we'll, we'll do our best. Well.
I think you'll include that number in the reply.
Yeah, we always do. I mean, we're still going to put it in our annual report, be part of our budget. Um process. Um so we. So we we you, we always communicated before it was a requirement.
Yes, E D?
Um and it has not been on the ballot for the last two years also, so nobody is looking for it. Because there hasn't been there, right? It was there for a few years, and then it's been gone during COVID, and it's going to be gone after next year. So it was an experiment to help people understand um how districts are spending money that. Turned out not to be as effective as it was thought to be.
So I haven't, I haven't heard more than one person question whether, maybe two, whether this is a good thing to do. So I'm sensing we have consensus to um, you know, implement the change. When the law passes, but um I haven't heard from everybody and I don't really want to have an actual vote. Let's hear from Tom, maybe you can share your perspective quickly.
Yeah, I I think all that's said makes sense. What you just said makes a lot of sense. One question I just wanted to flag, and I. Forgive me if you said something sooner or earlier about this, but it does allow us to change the annual meeting date. Is there any reason, and I'm wondering if other districts um are are making this move to change their their voting date? Um to when we have a little more information, is that something other folks are considering? Clearly, there was a reason for wanting to do that. Um and presumably some districts are doing that, so I just, E D, do you have any insight on on that, whether we should consider that or not?
I think Kevin's the best person to answer that, because Kevin's been pushing to change our annual meeting date for a while. Um but what we realized is that having more information is still elusive. And there's no date that we can for sure have information, because sometimes we get it all after. The new year has started, the school year that in the budget had to be passed already, so. It's really a, it's, there's not a clear answer to that either. You know, I wouldn't be for changing it just because. There's not a better time to do it for sure, right? There are possible better times to do it, but there's not a for sure better time to do it.
Yeah, that's a bigger conversation you want to have with the town.
Yeah, thank you for rate, like, thank you for raising it, Tom, because there are, that is another option available that we didn't um share. Um probably should have, but we, I think collectively. Are recommending that we not move the date, given that we already have an important article on the agenda, which is to move everything to Australian ballot. If that passes, then that kind of sets us up to consider the timing of that vote. Since it's all done by Australian ballot, so I I look at it as sequential. Let's, let's see if the district is okay with putting everything on Australian ballot. If they both know on that, they want to have a sit-down meeting, then okay, we'll continue to do that. We'll reassess the timing of the meeting one way or the other.
Okay, just a question. So am I right, though, when I, when I read the warning? That the annual meeting actually is at town meeting day, it begins that Thursday or whenever where we have the, you know, it's the budget informational meeting. And our annual meeting where we do the business on the floor, which we want to get rid of, but this would be the last time we do that. But then it actually concludes at, you know, seven P M, town meeting day, right? So so I just, you know, I I, you know, I I think that we can still do the, probably still do our in-person. Yeah, you know, you know, maybe, maybe. Because we've still allowed for a budget to be in an Australian ballot, that is allowed. Um I don't think it would preclude us from still being able to do the things we need to do in this annual meeting. Um but anyway, I'm not necessarily for it, but but I just want to make the clarity of that point, that I don't think it would be. Procluding us from being able to move forward on on that.
Right, so is anyone, is anyone adamantly against um? Should the law pass, removing the statement about the percent change of equal cost per equalized pupil? Okay, thank you, everybody, for that discussion, being prepared for a special meeting. Where we would need to have at least eight people present. Um and then the remaining seven can sign the modified warning quickly thereafter. Thank you uh for everybody's participation on that item. Let's check the time. We are about fifteen minutes over. We've only allocated five minutes to this one, folks. Um I wasn't at last meeting, uh but I believe we did a a dry run of these two policies. So they're on the agenda to vote on. Um given that they've already been introduced, I'd like to just start with. Actually, let me ask this of the board, is there anybody against approving them together? Okay, then I would um entertain a motion to approve the responsible computer network and internet use policy. And the students who are unhoused policy, would anyone like to move that? So thank you, Ethan. Uh anyone would like to second that? Okay, at this time, is there any discussion on the motion?
We had some discussion about the unhow, the term unhoused, and I'm just curious what we found out um.
That we could change that as long as we put a footnote in the policy referencing McKinney dentures.
And were those the only changes?
Yep. Yes. Uh E D?
So can I make a friendly amendment that we actually make the housing change to the the homeless change to unhoused? And add the proper language?
Have you been done?
Thank you. Is the title of the policy going to change?
We made the friendly amendment already.
Yeah.
Well, I I think what um we're saying is if you click on the policy itself, the change has been implemented. We're getting head now, so that was done. So no need for the friendly amendment. Okay, if we undo them. Okay, um are we ready for a vote? All right, um all those uh in favor, if you could just uh raise your thumbs and hands, then we'll be able to do a. Look around the room and everybody will see that everybody, this is yes, and everyone online is giving me the yes. I know about Stu, he's raised her hand. All right, I'm definitely seeing the majority. Are there any opposed? Hearing and seeing none opposed, so we'll say unanimously approved. Thank you. Still behind sixteen minutes. Okay, we have ten minutes reserved for committee reports. Let's try to move through these uh efficiently if we can, but please take the amount of time you need to cover what you want. What you need to cover. Community engagement update.
Um we don't have an update because here we need to be.
Okay, thank you. Lisa, finance committee needing update?
Everything is fine.
No changes to the budget, of course, because we've already warned it. Thank you. Uh Chuck, any update from negotiations?
Yes, uh I encourage you to go to uh the MMU website. And you can find the initial uh proposals from the negotiating committee to uh to unions. And you can see their responses. Um they're still, they're just, obviously opening positions. Um and they're, you know, they're quite uh quite far apart. Uh the next meeting is on Monday and uh I encourage people to, you know, to to join the meeting.
There you have it. Hey Chuck? Um you're still on that RAB update?
Uh yeah, we had a, we had a RAB meeting. Led by superintendent from Essex dot com, who I think very highly, very highly both Essex and Burlington superintendents. Um so, you know, we got presented the budget after, you know, like long after it had been, you know, considered approved. Um by the two school districts, which is a little disappointing. Um and uh we also learned that neither of the superintendents wants to chair the RAB going forward. Um which to me is just a, you know, implication of um. Just a lack of uh, a lack of commitment on the part of like those two superintendents. Or a lack of time or something in terms of engaging the uh, you know, the rest of the school districts. I think that uh, I think it's a, in my view, it's a, if this is not a report, it's opinion. Uh that we really need to move towards a situation where there is a superintendent for tech. Who can uh, who who will be kind of the advocate and the planner and the leader chief of.
Thank you, Chuck. He has helped me to add our question brief.
Yeah, I just want to add, the state is currently um in the middle of two reviews on tech. One on um the tech centers at the high school level, the other on adult tech. I went to two listening sessions, one in Barry and one in Burlington to hear um what folks are thinking about tech. And how folks are thinking about it, and I've been pleasantly surprised at the openness to folks all over the state to thinking about tech differently. Um so I'm, I'm optimistic that um in the next two years, there will be some changes made. So Chuck, you'll have opportunities to testify, I'm sure, and um I think we should stay tuned to that, so that's all.
Washington County, you know, the the tech center that was at Spalding High School in Barry has been separated from the high school. And is now its own district, um with its own leadership, with board representation from all of the district schools. And I think that's a real productive direction. Right now, we have no say. We have, we can express our opinions, but we have no governance relationship with the two tech centers in Washington County. Um they've, uh now want to learn a lot more about it, and and I think you will be very helpful on that. I think separating the two tech centers from Essex and Burlington High School and having, not changing the physical plan. Um but having, you know, separate district governance would um would really help. And I just, just want to just keep saying that participation in tech ed in Chilton County is sixty percent below the rest of the state.
They are going to make a change to the physical location in Burlington, that's.
For some of the programs. But it's not uh. The inclination on the part of Burlington is design a tech program for the Burlington High School, and they're kind enough to invite other people to come. In fact, this is something that we should be running together and that we're paying, that we're paying for.
All right, thank you for that, Chuck. Um we have a V S B A dash legislative. I don't know if that someday will separate out, I mean, we have the inside scoop, but who has our V S B A update?
I do, and there's nothing to report.
Thank you, Diane. And is there any other legislative update to share?
No, I think we're pretty much caught up on that.
Are you going to get home tonight?
Am I going to get home tonight eventually, I think?
Yeah, okay. Um, all right, so we moved through that. We're just catching up, guys, catching up. Uh approve previous meeting minutes. I understand you had a efficient meeting without Chuck and I. Does anyone have any comments on the next? They want to make questions to or make changes who was present at the meeting? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes as written.
So would.
Thank you, Andrew. Second?
Second.
I've been already asked if there's any questions, we got nothing back. All those in favor, raise your hand. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, that's enough. Any opposed? The rest will abstain, I assume, because you were not at the meeting. Thank you, unanimously approved. All right, we moved through that one much faster than five minutes on the agenda. All right, we uh, just looking ahead before we do the public wrap-up. Do folks on the virtual have a link to executive session?
We'll have to send one.
We are, we are. So when the board agrees, we can move at some point.
Yes, Jeff, could you do that so that they could tune in here? We have to close out of this.
Sure, there is nobody on the meeting that isn't a board member, but we just need to stop the court. Would that be?
But somebody has joined.
Somebody could join. Okay, so we need a lot of, a lot of, a lot of. Oh, yeah, yeah, we're, we're, we're going to go through other business. I'm just getting the logistics ready for the executive session. All right, so for folks, um. Alright, so for folks, um, on the, who will be, Jeff is going to be sending out another Google meeting when it comes time to go into executive session for you to join. We'll probably stay in this room if we don't have too many community members present. Okay, while that's being done, in parallel, we will talk about other business. It says here, our next board meeting is February 13th, 2023. So please mark your calendars for that. Already on the agenda, notwithstanding what we've talked about today, uh, BRMS principals report. There's a monitoring report coming from, uh, administration for district leadership succession planning. And we're going to get informational update on special education. And from what we've discussed already on this meeting, we will have an update from the board leadership. On establishing our stated objectives. Is there anything else that the board members would like to see on the next meeting agenda? If you have something, please share it with ED or raise it now. Alright, that's our, that's our agenda so far, February 13th. Do we also, John, at that meeting, do a budget review for community or not? Separate, that's a Thursday thing. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, plenty of meetings.
Plenty of meetings coming up in February. Alright, now open up the floor for other business that we didn't, uh, already cover that board members wanted to raise. This would be informational, not actually.
Hey. Hey, I just want to recognize that, um, Molly Billings, our second student rep, was present in this meeting briefly. Um, I had just touched base with, um, Mr. Weston about that. And, um, I, I just want to keep everybody in the loop that, you know, we, we want to welcome her and identify her presence. And she was there for a brief amount of time, so I want to acknowledge that because I had requested that she come to a meeting.
Yeah, that's great. I saw, I saw that name. I don't think we did the student representative struggle.
In the roll call, exactly. It's just something to remember.
Next time we'll do that. That's already taken, I'm sure. Okay, thank you. Any other, other business? I don't know if we want to circle back to the pre-K conversation at some point. Okay. Alright, um, so the executive session, um, don't have the official wording here on the agenda, so, um. Oh, yeah, it is, it's written right in today. So I'll just read it, somebody could move it, I'll entertain a motion to move to go into executive session. I have, you know, discussed with ED and John, this is a necessary topic to go into executive session, we'll talk about it there. After specifically finding that the contractual matter falls within exemption in the public records law. Thank you very much, for a second. Alright, um, so we'll do, we'll just do a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand to go into executive session. Thank you, we've got, uh, that approved. So logistically, we'll stay here.
Yes, we'll stay here.
Or.
And you can put around here and you can take control. Yeah, or you can, I mean, the board can invite you in.
Yeah, for this topic, I don't have any concerns about, um, other members of the administration staying. I'm okay with that. And once we get into executive session, we can further take that if someone has a concern. And folks on the meeting remotely, if you haven't already, go ahead and drop and then rejoin on the link that Jeff Wallace has sent out. Um, back, so all those in favor of journeying, please stand up, clean up your area and depart if you're here remotely. Thank you very much for participating. Thank you, Jeff, for, uh, all your technical facilitation, it's been going really well. Drive safe.
Thank you for running the meeting, Kevin.
Yeah, thank you.
Alright, see how long it lasted, so if you wanted to go until 9:30.
If you ever don't want to do a job.